Again, happy new fiscal year. This is the first moment of business in the town of Stratford in this new fiscal year, which has significance in our charter. I call to order this meeting of the Stratford Town Council, special meeting at 8:30, well, I'm sorry, it's 9:18 in the morning on Monday, July 3rd, 2017. Is there a motion? We had the public forum. Is there a motion regarding continued expenses for fiscal year 27, 2018?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. A discussion? Yes, Ms. Antezzo.
I noticed this refers to Section 6.2.4 of the Charter. And I consulted the Charter and the change that has been put in after the section that says "chargeable to the appropriation of the year when passed," it says, this motion says, "in accordance with previous year's appropriation ordinance." The Charter reads, "to an amount sufficient to cover the necessary expenses of the various departments until an annual appropriation is enforced." I am interpreting this as meaning that we will approve the entire budget from last year as use, "in accordance with previous year's appropriation ordinance." Last year's budget has a whole section that is illegal. And I'm going to refer you to what was stated last year in the '17 budget was on line 011004699, referred to as the Tax Relief Fund. $700,000 was appropriated. This year, we discover, if we look at this year's budget, that the so-called Tax Relief Fund was really the sewer revolving fund, and $700,000 is appropriated out of that, which is illegal according to state statutes. So I cannot vote for this, as it stands.
I'd like to refer to the town attorney, Chris Hodgson, to speak to this and any other point regarding the budget. Mr. Hodgson?
Yes, the councilwoman is correct insofar as the Charter does provide for appropriation for current departmental expenses in accordance with the previous year's appropriation ordinance plus continuing contracts. So this is a pro forma measure that will be in effect until such time as the budget appropriation is made for the year to enable the town to continue to operate. And without this, they would not have sufficient revenue to continue our operations.
Okay, Ms. Antezzo.
I'd like to ask Mr. Hodgson, Attorney Hodgson, a question. Why then was it necessary to change the wording of the Charter, 6.2.4, "in accordance with previous year's appropriation ordinance"? I'm reading that as appropriating the entire budget from last year, and I'm telling you it's illegal.
Putting aside-
According to state statute, you cannot spend sewer funds for anything except sewer improvements. And last year, $700,000, if that's the budget you're going back to, $700,000 went into the general fund.
I do not believe that will be implicated at all, councilwoman, because we are appropriating money for current departmental expenses, so that each department will have the appropriation from last year plus continuing contract expenses. So it would not implicate what you're talking about.
Ms. Antezzo, did you have more?
Well, I'm really not satisfied with it because I don't know why we can't go month to month and charge, which would seem to indicate, in the actual town Charter, 6.2.4, it doesn't say you have to do the whole previous year's appropriation ordinance.
Mr. Hodgson-
Well, in effect, it is month to month insofar as you will make the appropriation today, and it's temporary until the annual appropriation is enforced. And then I anticipate that the budget as an item will be on the agenda each month until the annual appropriation is passed for this year.
Ms. Antezzo, did you have anything else? Did you have anything else for Mr. Hodgson?
No.
No.
Not at this time.
Okay, Ms. Manis.
Good morning. Two issues with passing this and voting affirmative for me, in addition to what Ms. Antezzo said, which I agree with wholeheartedly. Mr. Hodgson pointed out that what we would approve as departmental expenses would be what the budget is, so he didn't see us as in any kind of issue. However, the revenues that we collect pay for those departmental expenses, and under "revenues" is the line item that Ms. Antezzo references. That $700,000 is actually helping to fund our town. It's a regressive tax that has been placed on people who have sewers and use the sewer system as opposed to a septic tank, so that regressive tax would continue and that revenue would be used to fund the town departments. So again, because everything's connected, it doesn't work. The other thing is, is the month-to-month issue, I disagree. I'm not a lawyer, but I disagree. I've read the Charter. The Charter says "current month's expenses." Now, a current departmental month's expenses, and I know in my home, my current month's expenses come to me at the beginning of the month, middle of the month, the end of the month, and I pay my bills. The Munis is a mechanism that we use in our town to produce reports that show us what monthly expenses are, what monthly appropriations, what monthly portions have been used. So our town is already using the Munis and reporting out monthly. So to say that we have to give everything all at once, to hats to say that we're giving it all up front, is very silly because our town itself is going month to month, and the Munis is available publicly online for everyone. So again, the Charter reads "current expenses." Right now, there have been no expenses incurred except for today, and we meet monthly, that's in our Charter. So I would assume that because the council continues to meet monthly, there would be an opportunity to produce and pay for the month's expenses as we go into the next fiscal year. It would just make sense that that would be appropriated, and it would be presented by the mayor, and no illegal transfers and revenues would be able to happen. So we would be paying for expenses. I'm not sure if they would come from revenue or if they would come from the general fund, but they would have to be paid month to month. That's my reading of the Charter, that's my understanding of it with regards to representation of my constituents. Thank you.
Mr. Hodgson?
I would just point out that 6.2.4, councilwoman does not refer anywhere to monthly. It's just that there shall be, the council shall make, with the approval and writing of the mayor, appropriations for current departmental expenses.
And my issue is not month to month. My issue is on the word "current." Current are incurred expenses. When you talk about a budget, you talk about anticipated expense. You're not talking about current expenses. So the appropriation, the part of the Charter that's written is written there, and I'm sorry I'm talking, I've been up since nine o'clock, T-Shake, last night. The part of the Charter that is written there that says "current expenses" is written there specifically, I would argue, in the Charter because we cannot approve an entire appropriation. So 6.2.4 exists, not just because we can't pass a budget that will stick, but because you can't approve a budget, because if we could just approve a budget up front, we wouldn't need 6.2.4, and it wouldn't say "current." Current, to me, means "now." What do we need to pay now? What are the bills we need to pay now? So that's how I understand it, and that's how I'm interpreting it. You may not agree. I'd like to hear, you know, other opinions on it, but that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Hodgson?
Well, again, we're using last year's budget, which will provide for the expenses, including payroll in each department, plus continuing contracts. That would include raises that's supposed to go into effect today as a continuing contract. So what we're trying to do is to get an appropriation from the council with the approval and writing of the mayor to keep operating the town departments.
Is there any other discussion?
I'd just like to follow up very quickly. In no way am I saying to furlough or to lay off or to, in any way, detract from payroll or any expenses that the town would incur. However, I'm saying that the monthly incurrence of expenses should be given to us for current expenses only. So whatever those are, according to last year's appropriation, we would, by law, have to approve. And I agree with that 100 percent. I would be remiss in my duty if I did not allow the town each month to continue functioning. I would be irresponsible and completely out of my mind if I was to allot an entire kitten of money that would create a surplus or a deficit at the end of next year, depending on the spending that happens, because as we've seen in the Munis, monies are 300 percent overspent. They're not staying in line. So I want to see this go month to month. I want to see us following the Charter and paying current expenses only until we have an appropriation. At that time, we can change things up. But we don't have that yet, and so we need to go month to month, because if you approve all the way up front, it's not appropriate. But again, I'm not a lawyer, that's just my opinion.
Could one of the attorneys or others speak to whether it is logistically feasible to go month to month in terms of actually sending out tax bills?
No, it wouldn't be feasible. In the event they were going to do tax bills, that would be for the year, so it wouldn't. And there's no provision anyway in our Charter to do a month-to-month appropriation.
And can you speak to what the counterfactual is? That is, if the council does not approve this, first, do we have an alternative? Because the Charter, my understanding is, says "shall." And then can you talk about what the counterfactual is?
Well, we'd anticipate that the council will follow "shall," and it's a pro forma resolution before the body today to make the appropriations. So we wouldn't think there's any issue with that, and we can keep the town operating.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Can?
Thank you, Chair. I have many questions, so please be patient. First, I'd like to go to the point that Ms. Antezzo raised, and there's, specifically, if an item in the budget violates state statute, is it reasonable or legal or permissible for us to perpetuate that illegal taking of money for a third year? I mean, does our Charter essentially override state statute?
Well, we've been down the road many times with the sewer fund and the state statute. We've never ruled that it was illegal. There was a factual issue with respect to the origin of the sewer fund and where that money came from. So I mean, I think to try to circle back to that issue at this time, when we're simply trying to follow the Charter, which provides for the stopgap measure to make appropriations to keep the town operating, we're just getting distracted. But we've never said, but again, you have, pardon me, you have the right to ask the question, so I'm just trying to provide info. So excuse my opinion. But with respect to whether the sewer fund being in the budget was illegal and used for town expenses, I don't, this office has never said it was illegal.
I should keep going, Mitzi. The WPCA, as a board authorized by the state of Connecticut, per Charter, independent from the municipality itself, recently voted a budget for 2018 for itself. And in that budget, it reduced, it correctly reduced the cost allocation that it pays to the town by $278,000. So on, one, you'd say there's $700,000 in the revenues of 2017 that we don't know if the revolving fund has $700,000 in it, and there's an obvious question about the legality. But there's also a contractual decision, a continuing contract, using that phrase, with the WPCA, where it is said, "we're only going to pay the $640,000 that are justified by the tangible evidence of the contractual services as documented by the Director of Finance and the CAO." So how would that second reduction in revenue impact our ability to pay expenses under this appropriation?
Well, you have to make the appropriation first, and then you have to find out what your revenue sources are going to be. But until you pass this measure to make the appropriations, then there's really nothing to talk about. The next step would be revenue.
Pass an appropriation. This is a new road, a new path for all of us. We have no evidence of what continuing contractual obligations are. Nothing has been presented to members of this council on an itemization of these continuing contract obligations. It would be impossible for us to vote on an appropriation since we have zero evidence to substantiate that appropriation. We've been asking for that evidence for the last two weeks, since Mr. Chase said after the last council meeting, there will be no more efforts to negotiate. That was the kickstart for the town administration to compile. Chris Timniak sat here that month, stood here, excuse me, that Monday night and said it could be as high as $6 million. Over the last two weeks, number of requests to Town Hall, despite vacations, the capacity of our administration should be well-staffed to answer these questions, and we're left here today. Are we, is it the chair's intention that we vote on this paragraph without any factual, tangible, numeric justification for it? Would you be, is that your interpretation, attorney?
Well, I understand Mr. Timniak is available if you want to ask about the continuing contract expenses, and I believe he does have the number.
That would be wonderful if he has them. I've heard that he has them. He's also said that he would share them, and he has not shared them. And even if he chooses to share them, how much opportunity are we allowed to have to review them? Chris?
Thanks for inviting me to speak. When we started going through this, we shot right back to the resolution. The fact is that the town does not have a budget, and the new fiscal year started. The resolution is the resolution, and that's what we need you to approve today. When we start talking about contractual expenses in 2017 budget, that's a guideline. Until you pass a 2018 budget, which is what we're asking you to do. So when I was going back and forth with the list, the list shouldn't be debated. The resolution is what we're doing today. I didn't want to bog things down and create side conversations. The reality is, we don't have money right now. We'll be out of money mid-August. I met with People's Bank on Friday, and we discussed, we discussed how we're going to move forward or proceed without this. We need some sort of instrument or some tool to actually collect the money so that we can go ahead and approve what we're going to do month to month. Hopefully, hopefully, we have an instrument in place so we can tell the employees and tell everybody in town, yes, your jobs are here, yes, we want to continue to operate, we just haven't passed a budget yet. At some point, I expect this town council to pass a budget for 2018. I've notified the state of Connecticut, Office of Policy and Management, to our situation, and we put a lot of effort into passing a budget. And yet, we stand here on July 3rd, the new fiscal year, and we have no budget.
Would it be your expectation tonight that we would pass, this morning, excuse me, that we would vote for a new, a mill rate in order to send out tax bills?
No, you're not voting for a mill rate today. There's no mill rate discussion happening here. You're authorizing essentially an emergency procedure. We've talked about this being uncharted territory for everybody here. This is uncommon, a town not passing a budget. It's uncommon. The Board of Education usually receives 100-plus million dollars. Here, we're going to be out of money in August. People's Bank is not able to collect money after August 1st. They go from July 1st to August 1st, okay? We need to extend our tax collection date past August now, probably somewhere in the August 15th range, which means that we're going to have lines out the door of people who can't pay their taxes at People's Bank. What we have been trying to do to lower costs by outsourcing and bringing in other places via mail, via People's Bank, to pay your taxes, we've now undone, and we're going to create a hectic scene this August when people come to pay their taxes the day they're due. I'm going to have to hire extra staff to handle that.
We're all making financial sacrifices for this purpose, this untreaded water and unnecessary circumstances. Mr. Farrington Posner reminded us during the public comment that two budgets were passed, and there was a lot of complaining about those budgets, but there was no substantiation from any administrative official on tangible fraudulent activity or tangible violated contracts of those past budgets.
I'll dispute that. I disagree. Both those budgets were vetoed with appropriate messaging of why they were vetoed.
But with a paragraph, with a complaint. But let's move on. What do you mean by appropriation? Are we just saying simply, we're going to approve this paragraph hereby authorizes an appropriation for current departmental expenses? What would that allow you to do if we passed that paragraph?
I believe that's a question for the town attorney.
Mr. Can, was the question, what's an appropriation?
What does an appropriation allow us to do? What does appropriation mean?
Appropriation allows you to make provision to pay the necessary expenses of the town until you pass an actual budget.
Since we do not have any quantification of what those actual expenses are, or what the current expenses are, or what the continuing contract expenses are, or what the increased revenues due to continuing contracts are, how can we vote for an appropriation?
Well, you're going to vote for it on the basis of the best knowledge that you have at this time. I know that Mr. Timniak has projections. Now, as he said, it's difficult because some of those projections are not going to come into play until later on in the year, so it's difficult in that sense. But you're not going to have to define it at this time with mathematical precision. You're going to use the best information that you have collected from Mr. Timniak and the various department heads as to what the current operating expenses of both the town and the Board of Education are.
Mr. Florak, I'll repeat what I said when Mr. Hodgson was there. We have zero information upon which to make any numerical evaluation of what an appropriation should be. So the meeting, you're asking us to vote in ignorance, and that would, has to be some violation of due diligence or some violation of ethical responsibility.
Well, all I can say is that Mr. Timniak's here, and I'm sure that he's available to answer any question you might have in order to allow you to do that.
I have a point of clarification.
Wait, no, I'm sorry. Clarification? Okay, what is the clarification?
I'd like to know what the appropriation number is that we are appropriating based on last year. So is it two?
That's not a point of clarification.
That's not a clarification, and you really should call, make sure everyone-
Yes, I am.
-had an opportunity. Mitzi is trying to speak again, but you've got other people who've asked.
I know. Mr. Can, if you-
Thank you, Chair. All right, I'm, we've had many incidences where we've been asked to vote as a council on agenda items with no attached backup documentation. And when we've asked questions of the Chief Administrative Officer, the Director of Finance, just at the last meeting, the mayor said, "Well, gee, you should have done your homework. You should have read that. Why don't you ask those questions beforehand?" So we've been asking for the last two weeks, when will we get?
I'm going to ask the mayor to, will you be answering his question?
Yes.
Well, it's not a question, it's a statement.
It's a statement, but I want to comment on this because I'm listening to all this, and, you know, we're here to pass a simple resolution to keep our town going. You're asking for all these specific questions regarding projections. Let me just be very clear on this. This council willfully violated the Charter by not voting on a budget by May 12th. You're already in violation of the Charter. There were no workshops done. So when I say you didn't ask a question, perhaps you should have done workshops earlier on this year. You chose not to. That wasn't our decision. We offered it. Mr. Timniak made himself available, and some of you went and talked to Mr. Timniak, and others chose not to. And others, when they get an answer, didn't like the answer that they received and keep trying to talk around in circles, continue looking for an answer that may exist. And I hear the word "illegal activities." Nothing was done here illegally. We had this conversation when Mr. Timniak was asked about our town auditor. We get audited every year. There's nothing in there about us doing anything illegal. So when we throw out these phrases about, "Well, it's my opinion," and, you know, "we had an audit on a WPCA," but we don't want to pay attention to that because it doesn't give us the answers we want. That's your choosing. And by the way, those are opinions, and you have yours, and I respect those. But when I hear that, "We didn't get the information, and we don't know," that was your decision. Why didn't you have workshops earlier on this year?
Point of order, this goes beyond, this goes beyond answering Mr. Can's question.
No, it's not. And by the way, I have the floor, so, once again, I'm giving the answer that you don't like. That's the answer. You don't like it. That's fine. That's your opinion. We have ours. Our job is to make sure that this town is run fiscally responsible, we govern effectively but responsibly, and we follow the Charter. You did not follow the Charter. You violated the Charter.
We passed the budget twice.
Okay, we're going to-
By May 12th, there was no vote on a Charter prior to May 12th. You willfully, willfully violated the Charter. Because you know what?
Yes, there was.
You didn't like what that said either.
Yes, there was.
Yes, there was a vote on a budget before-
Judge Bellis said you did the same thing.
Okay.
Mr. Can?
Thank you. I have email requests to Mr. Timniak going back to May 20th.
Mr. Can, though, we're talking-
We are talking about it, and this gentleman just said that we don't ask questions of department heads. This gentleman said, "We don't write down our questions." We do, and we get crickets. We don't get answers. Mr. Ponti, you yourself told me on a phone call one day, "They're not going to call you back, Mr. Can, because they're mad at you." Great. So I've gone close to 10 weeks of posing written and verbal questions to Mayor Harkins' administration.
I did not say that quite like that. I did not say, "Those are not, that's not a quote."
It was a paraphrase. So, of course, just like I would paraphrase the state statute, "for no other purpose" will you use the sewer funds, "for no other purpose." That's not ambiguous. It's perfectly clear. And the fact that you had to call it "Tax Relief Fund" in some kind of subterfuge to sort of put it under the nose shows that it's not an honest taking of money. It sort of leans us towards a desperate move. But the main point is, we do, we were asked by you, Mayor, to put things in writing. They have been in writing. Ms. Karen Rodea, if you're here, you know, these questions to the town administration have been going back since April, and they remain unanswered, just like our questions about, "What are these continuing contracts you're referring to?" They're unanswered, just like you want to go back to the 2017 budget, but it contains questionable revenues. It also contains certain revenues that were dropped and revenues that we figured we'd gain in 2018, in the 2018 budget. I'd like to know if you would be including them in this appropriation, something like rent from the golf course, for example. I'd also like to know about all those fantastic savings opportunities that you identified, Mr. Timniak. Where you said, "2018 would have been a disaster budget," but you worked miraculously on behalf of the town to identify many opportunities to avoid costs. Would those be melded in to this, quote, "appropriation"? With no evidence of any financial consequences, how- With no evidence of any financial consequences, how do you vote for an appropriation when you have zilch evidence? And we've asked for the evidence, we've told it was a work in progress. We show up this morning, there's no paper on the DAS. We're left with zero evidence to substantiate the substance of this appropriation.
Yes, Mr. Leclerc.
If I could just address, I think I understand the question here. For purposes of this resolution, you're dealing with 6.2.4 continuing expenses. This is your emergency resolution that deals with the council. It requires the council to make appropriations for current department expenses, and then it defines them. It talks about using the last year's budget, the fiscal year that just ended, plus contractual obligations such as increases in salaries required under collective bargaining agreements or contracts the town entered into. The word it uses is "just appropriation." "You shall determine appropriations." Appropriations are defined as a sum of money devoted to a specific purpose, and specifically in connection with municipal law. It's an act of a legislative body paying money for a specific use. That's an appropriation, and I refer you back to 6.2.1, the budget requirement of this body. And it says, "No later than March 12th, the mayor shall prepare and submit to council a budget." And then there are two categories that it instructs you what to do regarding your budget. Number A in that 6.2.1, you must have an itemized statement of the appropriation. The budget has to have an itemized statement of appropriations. And B, an itemized statement of taxes required and estimated revenues of the town from all other sources for the ensuing fiscal year. So when you're doing the budget, you need both appropriations and statement of taxes and other revenues required for sources other than taxation, direct taxation through the tax bills. At this point, because you're dealing with 6.2.4 in this special meeting as an emergency measure because you've run out of money effectively, your tax bills did not go out for July 1st. The town has no money coming in whatsoever. And as Mr. Timniak indicated, the town runs out of money the first week of August, so there's no money to pay any bills. You only deal under 6.2.4 with appropriations. You don't address and cannot address at this time revenues. That's an entirely separate discussion. The only thing you shall do is approve appropriations, the sum of money devoted to a specific purpose or the payment of monies for specific uses. And then 6.2.4 tells you what the amount of that appropriation is. Necessary expenses using last year's budget plus contractual obligations of the town. So you don't, it's not proper to discuss revenues at this time, because that's not part of 6.2.4. You need to approve, you shall approve this resolution under your charter of those appropriations, and then at some point, hopefully, you will come up with a budget for this current fiscal year that started on Saturday at 12:01 a.m., which will address both appropriations and revenues at that time.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Point of clarification to Ms. Leclerc, thank you very much for that. You mentioned "sum of money" a few times as you were reading it word for word, verbatim. We don't have the sum of money. We don't know what that sum is. How do we vote on something that we don't know?
Mr. Timniak can tell you that money, that sum is set by 6.2.4. It's last year's expenditures in the budget plus contractual increases, and I believe Mr. Timniak should be able to tell you what the increases are, what contracts require additional money this year, and what contracts you'd entered into, whether it's for school or bonding or things like that, what money you're obligated to pay, or leases or things like that.
Mr. Leclerc?
Okay, I'm calling, I'm sorry, I'm calling on Mr. Timniak to answer that point of clarification.
So, in working with the Finance Department last week, we came up to that number, and, I mean, the number really shouldn't be debated. What should be debated is a budget for 2018, and that's one of the reasons why I'm sitting here. The number's $6.5 million in increases of what we deem contractual obligations for 2018.
Okay, thank you very much. That satisfies that point of clarification. Mr. Khan, you have the floor.
Mitzi, did you wanna make a point of clarification?
Mr. Khan, you have the floor.
Yes, I do. I'd like to ask Mr. Timniak a question.
Okay.
No, Mr. Khan has the floor.
All right. Mitzi, I'm sorry, there's a... Six point... Six point, can you repeat that number, please, Chris?
$6.5 million.
Is there a reason why you would not share that with us?
In discussions last week, today's meeting was presented as a pro forma. Come in here, vote for emergency spending. This was not to be a debated situation. We are in, I would consider, a state of emergency here in the town of Stratford. It is, it is something which, again, I'll go back, very few towns go for, uncharted territory. It's important that we approve the emergency.
So, if it's so important, why would you withhold information from the council?
Information wasn't withheld.
You have information related to continuing contracts.
One at a time, please, through the chair.
Yeah. So at the last meeting, I told you, it was like six and a half, $6 million in that area, and I'm doing the same thing at this meeting. I told you, I ran through line items at the last meeting. Again, when we go ahead, you're, we're gonna, instead of having a conversation about the emergency situation the town's in, you're looking to have a steering conversation about what we deem to be a contractual obligation versus what you deem to be a contractual obligation.
Isn't that what we're being asked to vote on? We're being asked to vote on continuing contracts and the value of them. So we, we're being asked to vote on appropriation, which, as Mr. Leclerc explained, is an expense. We're not worried about revenues at this time, but at some point, we will have to worry about revenues. So are we simply saying today, "We vote for the town to spend money," but we're setting no limits on what that appropriation is?
You're voting today to authorize us to continue town operations, to continue what we do for the town of Stratford.
And you're giving us no scope of what that additional liability will be.
I'm asking you to pass a budget for 2018 so it can be defined.
Well, yeah, that budget would be, we have passed it twice.
Okay, but a budget that the mayor, that was not vetoed, has not been passed.
Thank you for the clarification. Chargeable appro, so you have no money. You have possibly money to, under this paragraph, could a tax bill be sent out if this paragraph was approved, Mr. Hodgson?
Can one of the town attorneys answer that question, please? Can a tax bill be sent out if we do this appropriation? We approve this? And, okay?
Therefore, without documentation on what this six point something other is? It'd be unconscionable, it'd be violation of our duties under the charter to merely vote for an appropriation where there's no limit on what that tax bill could be.
Well, again, Mr. Timniak has told you that the continuing contracts equal $6.5 million.
But...
He has, he has...
Florick has the floor.
He has spoken to various department heads, he has looked at it, and contracts are contracts, bonds are bonds, there's debt service, there's contracts, there's things like that. There should be no argument about what those things are. That comes from the executive branch of the government. And I will point out that the charter, when we're talking about this appropriation, says that the council makes an appropriation with the written agreement of the mayor. It's the mayor's office that, you know, produces what those contracts and what those continuing liabilities are. So it's really not germane to debate, "Well, do we have to pay this contract? Can we not pay that contract?" Those are all legal, you know, legal liabilities.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yeah, I think something else, just to add, these are not anything that's a surprise to this body, because your contracts, your collective bargaining agreements have been approved by this body, and your bond obligations, the debt that you've incurred, have been approved by this body. So this is not giving the administration authority to go out, for instance, and, you know, buy a new fire truck that you've never discussed, that you've never heard of, to obligate the town that way. You have last year's budget, the fiscal year, 16, 17 budget, plus collective bargaining agreements and bond and debt obligations that were incurred pursuant to the budget or pursuant to appropriations or items that came before the body for approval.
Is it so painful to write that down?
I'm sorry, Mr. Leclerc, were you done in your response? Mr. Khan, what's the question?
Is it so painful to write that down? Why would you refuse to share that information with us?
Well, I don't think "refuse" is the right word. I have shared it with you.
Zero. You can't say, "I talked in front of the DAS and said, 'Look, it's really bad, $6.5 million.'" Now, I would say, if we're not gonna have a CIPCEP for 2018, that's bond obligations we're not gonna have to pay for. I have a number for contracted salary increases that may not jive with what the mayor... I've heard questions of actuarial projections or statistical probabilities that are not substantiated by contractual obligations. So I've heard a number from the BOE that 2.2 is all they need. I don't see what the BOE's actually represented in Mr. Timniak's. That was at their Monday night BOE meeting.
So to resolve that, you would pass a 2018 budget which doesn't get vetoed. And that's, that's what, that's what we've been getting in the dialogue of what the contractual obligations are, is a secondary conversa, the first conversation is, "Hey, guys, we need to get the emergency spending together. Pass the budget, and then we're locked in."
Passing the budget would've been a lot easier if eight weeks of emails and voice messages had been returned.
I spoke to you numerous times.
Okay, I just wanna remind you that we're talking about this resolution. Mr. Hodgson?
I'd just like to interject here that alls we're talking about here is running the town as is until you pass a budget. And so our charter makes it very clear, you're just gonna use last year's budget numbers plus continuing contracts, and the contracts are known. So there's not, there's nothing to debate about the contracts. The CBAs, your bonds, anything with contractors, the high school, all those contracts have been approved. So this is a temporary measure. It's supposed to be in and out of here. Pro forma, let's keep the town running. I think we all agree on that.
Okay, there are other people who do want to speak, Mr. Khan.
That's wonderful, Ms. Ponte. You know, when, waiting two weeks, sending Mr. Timniak emails saying, "Timniak, sir, when will you share the list of continuing contracts?"
Do you have something to say about the resolution?
Oh, yes. We're speaking specifically about the resolution, 'cause the expectation is that his office is working on the continuing contracts, that some people have seen the continuing contracts, but not all of us have had an opportunity to take a day off from work and visit Mr. Timniak. So if your response is to me, specific to this, what are the continuing contracts, or that we're working on it? Jay's gonna be back in a couple of days. Jay's really busy, he's gonna wrap it up. And now you're saying, "Hey, Mr. Khan, I just kicked you down the road. I'm really not gonna show you any written evidence at all." So that's why I'm calling it refusal, because there was an expectation that you were compiling a list, that the list would be distributed and shared in our hands for this meeting. I mean, Mr. Harkins says, "No one knows what I'm talking about," but my English is not that imprecise.
Okay.
Then, then obviously, your staff is unqualified, or they're purposely being...
Okay, can we get back, can we get back to the topic of the resolution?
Oh, I thought we were having a sidebar.
No, I don't want any. Okay, are you, are you willing to let Mr. Young participate?
Oh, yes, you know, just that we've been waiting two weeks to get a piece of paper that air is now refused. There's a mention that Mr. Hodgson just said, "Hey, don't make a big deal, just sign an appropriation." But the consequence of that is, without any council input, a mill rate's gonna go out. Will a mill rate go out as a consequence of this, or does other intervening actions have to occur involving the council? Will additional votes by the council have to occur before?
Yeah. You're not setting a rate.
Okay, I'm going to recognize Mr. Florick. You wanted to speak on this?
Yes, you are not setting a mill rate. You will set a mill rate when the council actually adopts the budget for this fiscal year.
I think the question, though, was, when the tax bills go out, there will be a mill rate attached to that, correct?
Well, you have to raise revenue, so you are going to vote on last year's budget plus continuing contracts. That's, that, those are appropriations. Tax bills will go out, and they will be calculated on those appropriations, but you are not setting the mill rate. Once you actually pass a budget, it may well be different from this emergency measure that you're taking today in order to keep the town running.
So this, an affirmative vote on this appropriation that's on our agenda today will allow the town to set out a tax bill.
The town will have to send out tax bills in order to generate revenue.
And that tax bill will demand a payment by each of the residences and commercial tax liability partners.
Yes, that's...
And we cannot anticipate what that is, because we've not been informed of the continuing contracts. We've not had a say or an opportunity to review or validate or acknowledge even, so...
Well, again, I mean, we're all here, Mr. Timniak's here. I do think he said the other night what the value of those continuing contracts were. He's here if you wanna ask him any questions. This is not rocket science. I mean, this is a very pro forma situation. Ask the questions, get the answer, and let's vote to keep the town running.
Perfect. Let's go back to the last council meeting when Mr. Wahlberg and Mr. Timniak were standing up here, and they used roughly $6 million. On the record, I asked, "Will you provide a line item breakdown of those?" They said, "Yes." I said, "Will you relate each one of them back to a specific account and object number in the budget?" They said, "Yes." That was what they were supposed to be working on over the last two weeks. So, Mr. Florick, our efforts to get them to acknowledge on the record how they would compile those continuing contracts were acknowledged and agreed upon, and over the intervening two weeks, we were told that they were working on it slower than we would've wanted, and we arrived today, and what he promised at the council meeting is not here. You're asking us to ask questions. We did ask questions. We asked questions in anticipation. We tried to, like, anticipate the mayor's complaints. We tried to get ahead of the problem, and still, we are stymied in essentially being refused to view, what are we, children? We're not mature enough to look at it? Is this a secret? I cannot do my responsibilities as a town councillor if information is being purposely withheld.
Would one of the town attorneys like to respond to that, or no? Okay, I'd like to call on Mr., Mr. Florick, did you wanna respond to that? If not, I'd like to call on Mr. Young, who I had seen wanted the floor earlier.
Yeah. With passing this resolution, Mr. Timniak?
Yes.
And obviously, as Mr. Florick said, we're gonna be sending out a tax bill based on a mill rate.
Yes.
Over the expenses from last year, and what kind of contractual obligations we have for beginning of this year. What would that number come out as?
Pardon me?
What would that number come out as?
The estimated mill rate?
Yeah, I mean, what...
I mean, our estimate would be 39.97 right now.
Now, when we get to a point where we actually pass a budget that the mayor is okay with, and we get a majority of the council people involved with, when you mesh those numbers against that, what is likely to happen with the cost savings that you and the mayor and the administration have found, and some of the, and some of the cost savings that we have found?
There's likely to be a surplus.
Right. And what happens to that surplus?
Well, it would sit in our reserve fund, and eventually, it'd be appropriated in some manner.
Okay. So, bottom line is, what you're asking for us today, I mean, and Mr. Khan is right here to an extent, I mean, you're going on a faith call by the council that the town administration is gonna spend money without having specific limitations on what they're spending it on. That's, that's kinda where the rub comes up. It's like, "Okay, do I trust you guys?" Yeah, I kinda trust you guys, but at the same time, you're... But at the same time, you're asking us to make a decision on this without having an actual budget. And so, I understand where the rub is with Mr. Can. So, you know, how do we get past that impasse?
Well, I mean, to get past the impasse, I could go make photocopies and pass out what I have here. The intent was not to get bogged down into this. We can nitpick back and forth, and we can go, and we can have a discussion of whether you think the appropriate funding for contract... We've done this. We've gone that way when we did the budget. We did it many times. The intent was to have emergency, basically, certification, allowing us to operate business. Having the discussion about contractual obligations, we kept going back. There it is in the charter, it's contractual obligations. What we say today, contracts change throughout the course of the year. So, money gets cheaper, money gets more expensive. What I know to be today is this. So, when a budget finally passes, it could be completely different. You and I had a discussion in my office about the state of Connecticut and the revenue we anticipate from that. We don't know what that is. We don't know... I mean, they were supposed to pass a budget last week, and they didn't. So, go back. We're in uncharted territory right now. We really are. If you want to have a conversation over contractual obligations, and you want that to be the focus, more so than on what we're going to do, we talked about, you and I talked about, hey, the best-case scenario is when you finally pass a budget versus what we send out... I mean, the worst case is it's a $2 million difference. The best-case scenario is that it's sort of spot-on. And there's not much of a delta. And hey, listen, we did this. We talked about getting this pressure alleviated so that we can have substantive budget conversations moving forward. And, you know, the difference between the mill rate which would go out and the mill rate which would be an agreed-upon budgeted deal, I would essentially say, we said would be in like the half a million dollar, or half a mill rate. So, these are all conversations we have, so...
Okay. I have a question for you.
Okay, Mr. Young, are you done? There are a few people who haven't spoken yet. I don't know if they want to. Mr. Farrington, Posner, Mr. Harden, and Mr. Chase?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay, Ms. Antezzo?
I have a question for Mr. Timiak. Since the state has not passed a budget, if there are substantial changes with state allocations to the town of Stratford, will we have to send out another tax notice?
Most likely. It depends. If you use the word "substantial," yes. Like, if there's a substantial change, most likely, yes.
So, I know we're taking a risk on waiting, but it seems to me to send out now a tax bill to everybody that's close to 40 mills, .03 shy of 40 mills, and then saying, "Well, the extra money we're going to put in a fund somewhere," I think is a little premature. I think what the town council ought to do is really work hard this week on a true compromise. I know I was told at a meeting, which... Oh, how about if we do 2.35 for the Board of Ed? Well, that's like a three-legged stool with one leg. Because they never mentioned the mill rate. There never was a showing me of any kind of decreases that would have been eventuated. But I think this week, if we met every day, all the people that could, in a true spirit of compromise, we could get something done, and it would avoid this close to 40 mills. Which is iffy because we don't know what the state is going to give us.
I would respond to that, and I would say that 169 towns in Connecticut, almost all of them have set mill rates already, and all of them have a Plan A and a Plan B in place, depending upon what the state of Connecticut ends up. We actually, we don't have the money to operate the town come mid-August. Like, that picture is bleak. So, again, if all of a sudden, Fourth of July week, you think we can have a budget negotiation, I would say, where was this in early June? Where was this in May? You know, because this is what I was talking about of why we needed a budget.
To answer that, I would say that the 2.35 from the Board of Ed, the sticking point somewhat has been the Board of Ed with an insistent 2.75 bit. And loading the place with kids and all that propaganda was very annoying, and it wasn't a true figure. So, even though we even call the hardliners, the real hardliners are the people that won't budge and don't really... They're talking about compromise, but they only offer you the one leg of the three-legged stool. That's not going to work. You need to have it all.
I've said this at the podium before. I thought this budget, everybody I talked to said the town side was fine, and it was going to come down to what was the amount we were going to give the Board of Education.
No, I didn't think the town side was fine.
Well, you and I never spoke. So, I mean, we never met, right? We never met.
All right. I don't want to go back to the WPCA, but quite frankly, my motto is, "If you lie to me once, I question everything you said." And you gave cost allocations to the WPCA that were totally inaccurate. We told you that last April. And instead, you forwarded that same erroneous information about cost allocations to municipal and financial people who believed you, and it was off by a million dollars or more.
We've already had this conversation.
All right.
We've had this conversation, and I dispute that.
So, why would I come to you and ask you more questions when you didn't tell me the truth to begin with?
Okay. We've had this conversation, and I dispute what you say. I firmly disagree with it.
Okay. Ms. Manis?
So, I want to talk mill rate. I know it's not what we're voting on, but I know this is the question of the hour. And if you have your pens ready, these are the numbers that I'm coming up with. Correct me if I'm wrong. Finance Director, FY 1617, which was last year's budget, was proposed at, was approved at $214,103,311. So, 214,103,311. That was a mill rate of 38.99. The mayor's proposed 1718 budget was $220,358,957. That was a mill rate proposed of 39.93. The current ask, if your numbers are accurate with a plus 6.5 million in contractual obligations, would be an ask of $220,503,311. Okay, I'm rounding it because it's 6.5. That is an increase from the mayor's proposal of $144,354, which is roughly, if we were at 39.93, you're going 39.9 something. It's going to be 95, 96. I get it. The mill rate increased assessment, which no one has mentioned, Mr. Posner mentioned at the last meeting, creates a $1.67 million surplus. If you reduce that from the ask of right now, let's say we never pass the budget, we cannot get it done, the entire appropriation with that assessment, but that assessment goes into unrestricted funds, which we have no control over, it would have been $218,383,311. That $1.525,256,46 would be the difference between the mayor proposed and the current ask. That would be the surplus of revenue based on the new assessment of the mill. So, the mill rate that we would be proposing is actually from $214 million, which was last year, to $218. If we just say it's $218 because of that surplus, that's a $4 million increase, which is roughly a mill on last year, which would bring us from 38.99 to 39.99. If you don't take in count that surplus, it's going to throw you way over 40. And that, as I understand it, that surplus cannot be realized unless we approve an appropriate budget. So, okay, I took it away from revenue, took it away from everything, and I went through appropriations. And yes, it looks great on paper. But when you start to think about that surplus, that surplus goes into unrestricted funds. You can do whatever they want with it. And this $4 million increase still exists from $214 million to $218. That's a full mill rate from the year before. So, that would bring us to 39.99 if we were to do nothing. If we could use that surplus, and let's just say, just realize that in the budget, if we just could agree on that, that would be what would happen. As I understand it, that would send us way over 40. If we approved this today with a 220,358, or 220,503,311, that is 40.25 minimum. That's a 40.25 mill rate. No one wants to talk about it. That's what it's going to be. Yeah, we can try and fix it later, but that's what you're approving. And that is, it's just, you're asking me to do all kinds of things that are illegal and all... I have no problem approving the $6.5 million contractual expenses. I have no problem approving Board of Ed for all of it. I do have a problem with this number now, this ask versus now the increased assessment of mill and the numbers, even just from the mayor's proposal. It's going to send us way over 40, in my estimation.
In all of the worksheets we've done with Jay and myself, we've never had a mill rate above 40.
I don't have those worksheets. Okay.
Mr. Hodgson, did you want to respond to that?
I just want to say that when the town drafted its charter, they put in a default provision for what happens when the council cannot pass a budget by July 1. And that default provision is what we're looking at today. And simply, you're being asked just to appropriate enough money to keep the town running based on last year's budget plus the continuing contracts. It's not discretionary. It says "shall." A contract is a contract. They exist. Chris gave you the number, it's 6.5 million. It's a temporary measure. And then, you can get back to debating the budget. So, what we're asking you to do today is appropriate the money to keep the town running. It's not a discretionary act. There's nothing to debate. And that's the beauty of the charter. They actually did a good job in coming up with an eventuality of what happens if you don't pass the budget by July 1. This is a stopgap measure, saying, "Just use those numbers, which are clear, and then move on, then you can debate the real budget." So, that's what we're asking to do today.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank the councillor for your clear observation and opinion. This is pretty simple. You vote for this, you're saying, "Yes, we want to continue the town of Stratford to operate." Vote against it, you're saying, "We don't want the town of Stratford to operate." All the other questions are budgetary, which you still have an opportunity to come back and do, and have those discussions. And I'm sensing that's what the council's going to do, and I'm starting to sense urgency on all the council members, which is a good thing, is to get you folks together and come up with an agreement that most of you approve of. But this resolution is pretty straightforward. You vote for this, the town continues to operate through the Fourth of July and through the next couple of weeks. If you vote against it, you're saying, "We don't want the town of Stratford to operate." Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there a motion to call the question?
No, there's more.
I'm sorry, no, Mr. Chase?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman.
And there's more follow-up, Madam Chair.
You want to follow up?
No, I'm sorry. I recognized you. No, he didn't have the floor. Mr. Mayor, and then Mr. Chase?
I'm relinquishing to Mr. Can if he has a follow-up.
Okay, Mr. Can?
Thank you, Chair. Does Resolution 6.2.4 require that the appropriation be made on the first business day of the month of the new fiscal year?
Mr. Hodgson?
The ordinance just says that in the event the budget is not passed by the start of the fiscal year. I think what the urgency is here is that we would need to generate tax bills and get the taxes paid before August, when the town runs out of money. So, waiting until August is not prudent because then, in my limited understanding of municipal finance, there would be a lag between sending out the tax bills and getting them paid. So, we want to act now.
Mr. Timiak, you mentioned we have enough money in our accounts to operate the town through the end of August?
Well, I'll answer for him as he walks up. He said, "Middle of August," but that's a guess. I thought we heard from Jay, it was really more beginning.
Are you asking what we've already heard?
What we've already heard?
Mid-August, the town runs out of money.
Well, we've heard ambiguous responses. It'll be, at what point do we expect to run out of money?
Mid-August. We have some balloon payments we've got to do on bonding. We have employee step increases, which occurred on Saturday. We have teachers who need to get paid for summer work. We, I mean, we have bells, we have lifeguards.
So, to... Thank you, Mr.
Just let me interject one thing. We also have some workers' compensation settlements that were approved last year that have to be paid in July. And there's a penalty. And I'm not sure how much they total. My guess is there are a few hundred thousand dollars. But if they're not paid on time, then the statutes mandate a 20% penalty. So, if you're talking about $400,000 in workers' compensation payments, if they don't get paid on the day they're supposed to be paid, then you're basically spending another $80,000 because you're late. And that's something you don't want to do, certainly.
Okay, thank you. I'm recognizing Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'm not done yet with my question. I'm not done yet with the question.
Wait, one second. Mr. Can? Mr. Chase had yielded to you, and he's indicated that he wants the floor back.
I'm sorry, does the yield, like, expire when I take a breath?
I don't know.
Well, through you, Madam Chairman. How many more questions do you have? I mean, we could be here all... I don't want to be here to two in the morning again.
Oh, I've been waiting two weeks to, like, have this discussion.
So, we're grandstanding. I will take the chair back, Madam Chairman.
The floor back.
How does that work? Can I have an opinion from the attorney, please?
Mr. Leclerc.
Am I allowed to be interrupted in the middle of questioning?
Mr. Chase would like the floor back. He had yielded to Mr. Can. Is he entitled to it or not?
That's the chairman's decision.
Okay, I'm giving it back.
She has the power to control debate and manage debate under Roberts.
Okay, then I'm acknowledging Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Can. I thought we reached rock bottom. I didn't realize rock bottom has a basement. This is very simple, ladies and gentlemen. The town will close unless we pass this resolution. I don't know how many times the town officials have said, "We're running out of money. It could mean layoffs." There's nothing hard about this. All we can do is pass this today. Ms. Antezzo's correct. We could come back another day, try to come up with a compromise. Although, I don't see how that's going to happen when we have people that insist no tax increase, which is impossible considering the expenses that we've had, that all of you have approved before, such as salary increases, such as the workers' comp approval. And yes, Mr. Florrick, it is in excess of $200,000. So, we could sit here, and we can grandstand all day. And that's all this is. All of you have received Mr. Can's emails. I counted the number of pages. We're talking dozens and dozens and dozens of pages. I don't know. He says he has a job. I don't know where the heck you have the time to write them. Of course, I do get them 3 o'clock in the morning. I don't say much on this, counsel. I listen, observe, I vote my conscience. But this is, we've gotten to the point now where this has become theater. And there's no reason for it. Ms. Manis quotes figures. She quoted a million figures here to us. Anybody get that all down? It's all grandstanding.
Just post it online.
And Mr. Chase has the floor.
We tried to compromise with Mitzi to see if we could get to her. We said, "Okay." The chair was finally convinced she needed to come down on the Board of Ed amount that she wanted, from 2.75 to 2.35.
Not to 2.5.
All of a sudden, that wasn't good enough.
Grandstanding?
No, I'm not grandstanding, because I don't say much, Mr. Can. I listen to you all the time, hour after hour after hour. Yeah, and it's shameful. Someone...
Would the person who made that noise please leave?
Someone said we should work together. I've been sitting here for the last three months, trying to work together with people that will not budge, will not compromise.
I hope the cameras are catching a public member being escorted from a council meeting. This is supposed to be a public forum and a public meeting. Public is supposed to be allowed to stay here!
Knock it off! Knock it off!
Mr. Harden, you knock it off! Mr. Harden, you knock it off!
Let me explain something to you.
You knock it off!
You have been a bully! You have been inappropriate! You have turned this town into a circus with the nonsense that you say!
I'm beating up my wife!
You need to be taken out of here!
Excuse me, Mr. Harden, there are pictures of your wife! Don't call me a bully!
Let me tell you something, Mrs. Manis, you do nothing but cause ruckus in this town with your nonsense and your parade of clownery. So don't you ever sit here and talk to me like that. You are a bully! And that's what you are. You pull this town apart ranting and raving on Facebook about nonsense. You should be ashamed of yourself, and the crowd of people that marched behind you should be ashamed of themselves. This is a community that stands together, and we help people. We don't pull people apart. You should be ashamed of yourself.
Mr. Harden, Mr. Ms. Manis, Mr. Farrington Posner, please.
And how the lady who's just escorted out of the audience and now the council member that's...
Ms. Manis, Mr. Farrington Posner, and Mr. Harden.
When you're, when you're ready to conduct business, come there, I'll be back.
That was staged, ladies and gentlemen. They, they had every intention of walking out.
Is there, is there a motion to call the question?
I move the question.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of the resolution, I'm doing a roll call vote. Mr. Farrington Posner?
No.
Okay, you, you need to come up here and say no.
Then the microphone's on record, no.
Okay, you're a no.
Yes.
Mr. Harden is a yes. Mr. Can?
No.
Is a no. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Young is a yes.
No.
Ms. Antezzo is a no.
Yes.
Mr. Chase is a yes. Ms. Manis?
No.
Ms. Manis is a no, and I am a yes. The motion fails four to two because we needed six affirmative votes. Is that correct, Mr. Leclair?
This didn't have to be a no.
I'm sorry. It was four to four, I'm sorry.
Madam Chairman, you had four votes in favor, four opposed. Your charter requires six to pass.
Yep, so the motion fails four to four. Okay, so now there is no appropriation to run the town. This is why we were having this meeting this morning at eight-thirty a.m., so then the administration would know what to do with the staff in the town, including the recreation department, the day camps, the lifeguards, and everybody else. That will be to the administration's discretion. The next thing on the agenda is the Stratford High School renovations project. Be it resolved that the Stratford Town Council formally approves Turner Construction C O R- dash zero-zero-one dated June twenty-ninth, twenty-seventeen for the disposal of contaminated topsoil associated with the Stratford High School renovation project, O S C G number one-three-eight dash oh-one-oh-one, in the not-to-exceed amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. Is there a motion for that?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second by Mr. Harden.
Seconded by Mr. Harden. Discussion, I just want to say where this comes from and why this is on this agenda. We do have Crick here who could speak to it, or we did have Crick here who could speak to it, but I believe that there was previously undiscovered contaminated topsoil. Ms...
Yes, I written Netterick, Crick Construction. Yes, this is a value that is in the current budget for the school project. It was already approved by this committee. The, the soil was already anticipated that we may have this problem. The, the plan was to stockpile it and test it as it was leaving the site. As a favor to the, the site contractor, they asked if we could test it earlier, so they didn't have to stockpile it, and that's what we've done. As it turns out, the soil is contaminated with fertilizers and pesticides, which is typical of every school field everywhere. So we do need this approved to be able to continue moving forward.
Okay, are there any other, any other discussion? Mr. Chase?
Yeah, I just want to make a point that the chairman, both the chairman of the double, of the Building Needs Committee and the Stratford High School Committee did poll their members and urged that they come directly to the council so as not to delay the project.
Yes, I just want to talk about the process here. Typically, these, these sorts of motions are, or these costs are first approved by the Stratford High School Subcommittee and then the Building Needs Committee. Because of the urgency of this and the unanticipated nature of this, and because we were having a special meeting anyway today, this was put directly on the agenda. But having that information that informally members of those committees had, were in concurrence with this is, is helpful. Okay, Mr. Can?
Thank you, Chair. Sir, you, did you mention that the expense for this is already in the approved budget?
It is, it is in the approved budget. We're still within the, let's call it, the one-hundred-and-twenty-six-million-dollar cap. That was total for the whole project.
To be more specific, was there a line item in that one-hundred-and-sixty-million-dollar allocation approximately three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for, specific to this?
No, that's why this is being presented as a change order.
Okay.
But we do have contingency money available, and that's where this money would be coming out of.
And then just one last question, please. How much contingency money was in the original allocation? And how much of it, including this, roughly, have we spent so far?
Including this? This, this is, this is the only contingency money we've spent so far, and if I had to guess at the amount of contingency money built into this project, it's, it would be at least in the order of ten million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to move the question?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, that motion passes eight to zero. Before we adjourn as Chair, I want to say a couple of comments.
I would like to reconsider my vote.
Reconsider your vote for what? This?
For the, for the resolution.
Which resolution? Stratford High School?
Nope, the one above it. And here is what I would like to do, and I'd like to propose.
Wait, first, I'm sorry, first, there needs to be a motion to have the vote reconsidered. All in favor of having the vote reconsidered, say aye. I'm sorry, is there a second to have our vote reconsidered?
Point of information.
I'm sorry, we're in the middle of a motion. Is there a second for the vote?
I'll second you, Ms. Manis.
Okay, that was seconded. All in favor of having the vote reconsidered, say aye.
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 All opposed?
All opposed.
You're opposed? Actually, let's try this again, because I'm only hearing three. All in favor of having the vote reconsidered, say, I'm, I'm going to do this by roll call. Mr. Farrington Posner, having the vote reconsidered?
Out of respect, yes.
Mr. Harden?
I'll pass it this time.
Okay.
No.
Mr. Young?
Uh, yeah, I want to hear what Tina's got to say.
Ms. Antezzo?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
You got it, Tina, yes.
Okay, Ms. Manis?
You have to vote? Yes.
Oh, you, okay, I'm voting yes, Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes seven to zero, so the, I'm seven to one. The motion to re, so Ms. Manis?
It didn't need to fail, and I was not grandstanding, and the mayor caught it, and he thanked me for what I said, because I was explaining to the council, and I would like the council to have a chance for us to caucus, or however, you know, we talk to each other, to get our arms around this particular tax numbers. It's hard to read it on an envelope that's sitting in front of me. Yes, it is a tax increase. Yes, it is an increase to a thirty-nine point nine-seven as they are proposing. However, the mayor's proposal was thirty-nine point nine-three. It's four points higher. But we still, we're under six point two point four, which means it really isn't a real budget. It's just an appropriation. We can come in with another budget later on. I do not want to vote now. If I have to vote now, it's gonna be a no. I would like to recess the meeting, get everyone together around these numbers, and have a conversation. This is the first time I heard six point four million. I don't need Mr. Wahlberg's direct numbers to the pennies, maybe Mr. Can does. I don't need that. I just need the folks to understand what we're doing and understand where we can go from here, because we're setting two eighteen as the floor.
Okay, I, I will recess the meeting. We will recess for ten minutes.
Thank you. Respectfully, I think we should go to caucus.
When we left before, this ends the recess, but when we left before the recess, we were on the verge of, again, voting for this resolution, which is really allowing for the continued expenses for the town of Stratford for fiscal year twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen. I'd just like to briefly share what came out of that recess was a commitment to meet on Wednesday evening to, again, try to pass a budget. But in the meantime, because we don't want to see layoffs happening, and we don't want the town to be in crisis, and we do want to give the town employees and its creditors the assurance that there will, that there is a resolution for continued expenses, we will be voting on this. So I'm going to call, I'm going to ask for a vote on this?
Madam Chair, point of clarification.
Yes.
Did you just say that there will be a meeting on Wednesday evening?
On Wednesday evening in caucus. I'm afraid you didn't make the caucus.
Yeah, this Wednesday in caucus, you said?
No.
Or a council meeting?
There will be a council meeting on, a special meeting on Wednesday evening.
Where is that meeting to be held? Because I'm the chairman of the Longburg Park Commission. The past couple of months, I've had to, I've had to cancel those meetings for budget processes and council meetings, and we do have a meeting at two-thirteen at seven p.m. Also, I do know the Board of Zoning Appeals is gonna be meeting here in council chambers.
We will find a location. This is news to the council clerk, so we will work on that. We don't know yet, but by the end of the day, we will know. Okay?
I have a question.
Uh, yes.
In caucus and, and just in general, when we're standing out here, we were told that if this resolution were to pass, and if appropriations for expenses were to carry forward, that if we could pass the budget on Wednesday, that that would nullify what was passed, and that it would not, it would not send tax bills out at thirty-nine point nine-seven. And I was also, I want to put on record that both the, excuse me...
Ms. Manis, I think I said I would talk to the administration about...
Yeah, I want to put it on record, though. An appropriate amount of money would be allocated for the Board of Education, and the W P C A accounts would be reconciled. And those things have to happen in order for it to happen on Monday, on Wednesday. And I would like on record a commitment from our mayor to do that.
I'm sorry, we're, right now...
Do not veto a budget that allows the W P, because that's what this is about. It's never about anything else. We, we separate the W P C A, and we do what we promised we would do, and we found where those illegal transfers were happening. And at the end of the day, I can't help but wonder that no matter what we pass, even if it had an increase, if that's there, you're gonna veto it again. So I'd like to know if you're gonna allow us to do that work or not.
Right now, I just wanted to say, we're supposed to be discussing this resolution, and you're asking the mayor a hypothetical question on a budget that he hasn't seen.
I can't, I can't vote for it unless I have a promise.
First of all, I don't know what illegal transfers she's talking about. It's her, it's under her opinion. Legal counsel has indicated earlier they were not illegal, so let's start right there. And I have nothing in front of me to look at, and if I veto something, it's, it's gonna be a, a ordinance that I have examined closely, and I talked to other members, and it has to be an agreement or a compromise. So I have nothing in front of me. So it is a hypothetical question at minimum, I, so, it's kind of hard to answer.
After everything you put us through, I would, this town, I would hope that you would just make a promise to make that right, and you can't do that. I'm, 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 I'm at the breaking point right now, because you just can't promise that you'll take care of us, and I don't understand why.
What are you, what are you talking about?
You're asking, you're supposed to fix this.
We're talking about a resolution, and you're having like...
We're breaking the law!
I'm having an emotional breakdown.
I'm not, we're breaking the law!
Okay, stop, stop, please stop. Okay, we're talking...
I'm bleeding with you!
Okay, we're talking about the resolution in front of us, which is regarding continued expenses. Mr. Harden?
I was part of that conversation with Tina and Beth. So I'm hoping that we can come to, we're able to come to mutual agreement in that meeting that we had, and to us, that's important. You know, the tensions have risen or rose between all of us, because this is a difficult task to do. And I implore anyone to run and sit up here and do the job that we do, and maybe do it even better, since we've all been criticized about some of the things that we do here. And when we talk about making this money set aside to pay the past bills and the current bills that we occur here within the town, we need to think about not only the residents, but we also need to think about the families and the employees of this town that dedicate unselfishly their time even when they're not getting paid for. And I'd hate to see us run out of money and people be out of jobs, and this is a community. We, we fight, we have love and hate relationships, but at the end of the day, you know, we have to put those things aside and move forward. So I am hoping that we can come up with a plan today to at least get the monies put in place, so that after the time that we run out, we have something put there. And I'm hoping that Wednesday, again, we can come together as if we did in the room and leave our personal, you know, gripes outside the door, these acts that we have to grind, so we can do the willing work that needs to be done for this town. And I appreciate everyone's time on the council, the attorneys, and everyone in the room that really take time out of their busy schedule to come out and listen to this. For those, it may be entertaining, but for some of us, this is a way of life and a way of living. So I appreciate everyone for coming out and being patient with us, and I'm hoping that we could move forward with this amendment to get this done today.
Point, point of information.
Yes.
I thought we were discussing Ms. Manis's reconsideration.
Yes, and so we're talking about the resolution again.
No, her reconsideration.
No, we already voted that, her vote would be reconsidered. So now we're back to the resolution.
Has someone made it again?
I think Ms. Antezzo's correct. Someone should move the item again, item number three, Roman numeral three on your agenda and second it.
Okay, is there a motion to pass res, would somebody like to make a motion regarding the resolution regarding continued expenses for F Y twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen?
So moved, Madam Chairman. Second by Mr. Harden.
Okay, discussion? I'd like to call the, go ahead. Ms. Manis?
Can I have a point of clarification from the town attorneys? If this is approved, if it were approved, that the tax bills can be rescinded on Wednesday. I just want that on record.
They, they can be. I think practically, you can receive confirmation from Mr. Wahlberg, Mr. Timniak, or the tax collector that they would not have gone out by Wednesday. If they don't go out instantly, it takes a certain amount of time for them actually to be processed through your company that prepares the bills. And that's part of the urgency here, is they don't, it takes, it may take up to a week or so to get the bills out, but during that period of time, should you approve the budget, I don't see why not, the, the bills will just be switched and have them go out with the correct mill rate, whatever mill rate you folks set for the town.
Who makes that decision?
Mr...
What decision?
The decision to make the change. If we, if we pass something different...
You do as the council. If you, if you approve... If you, if you approve a budget on Wednesday evening at your special meeting, which has been called, tax bills, if they didn't go out, would have to go out with that mill rate that you set.
But there's also an issue with, the mayor has a certain amount of time to veto. So that would be something within there, Mr. Florrick, correct?
That's correct.
So then it couldn't be rescinded, because we would have to pass it Wednesday, and then he would need time to veto. That's the truth.
That's true, that is true. You'd have to receive a reassurance from the administration regarding the tax bills going out.
He won't make any promises, so, no.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Okay, Mr. Can?
Thank you. Try to be brief. One, there's no provision that says we have to make the appropriation tonight. If we make it Wednesday or some other later date, that is well within 6.2.4. Second, at the last council meeting, the CAO promised to provide a line item breakdown of all of the continuing contracts. And during our correspondence over the last two weeks, he explicitly said, "We're working on it, we'll get it to you as soon as possible." I cannot approve an appropriation that is not substantiated by facts. We deserve to have a witness to that, to do a little bit of Q and A about that, and we don't have to decide tonight. We can instruct the administrator to do what he committed to doing, and then we can evaluate this appropriation at a later date, such as Wednesday, if we choose not to do a budget on that night.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other comments, Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. Listening to both councils, Madison and Can, I think at this time, I'm going to make a motion to table, to table this, and hopefully, we can retake it up on Wednesday, once we receive the information from Mr. Timniak that's been requested over and over.
Second.
If we could just do by.
Mr. Leclair?
If I may, by clarification, your meeting Wednesday is going to be a special meeting, where you can only consider items on the agenda for the meeting. If you table it, you're not able to take it off the table on Wednesday's meeting. If you want to postpone it to a date certain, the date certain being Wednesday, that way it would appear on your agenda, and you can take it up. You can always table it again or take whatever action, as you know, under Robert's rules. But I would recommend, if you want to consider it Wednesday, not to table it, because you won't be able to, given the nature of Wednesday's meeting.
Mr. Leclair, I have a question. Since this is a reconsideration of a vote, does the last vote stand?
The last vote would stand.
Yeah.
The last vote stands unless and until it's reconsidered.
Still fails.
So it's still, it's a no right now, correct?
Okay. Okay.
But he can do that, right? Point of clarification, he can, he can do that reconsideration till a point uncertain or whatever. Table, postpone it?
Postpone, you could postpone, Mr.
So is there withdrawal of the motion to table in the second?
Withdraw.
Second.
No, I'm sorry, she has to withdraw her second.
Yes.
Okay, there was a withdrawal of both. Okay.
So, so Madam Chair, I make a motion to table, postpone this vote until a date certain, which would be Wednesday, July 5.
Okay, I just want to discuss the ramifications of this. So the no vote that we had before, when the motion failed, when the resolution failed, that would stand, okay? What happens Wednesday night is uncertain at this point. So then we would be leaving this room without a resolution regarding continued expenses approved for FY 2017, 2018. I just want to be clear. We would be leaving this room, leaving the town of Stratford with no, with, with no appropriation for FY 17, 18.
Agreed.
Okay? Because right now, the past, the resolution that we voted on failed, because it needed six votes.
Right.
Ms. Manis asked for her vote to be reconsidered. We approved her vote being reconsidered. Now, there's a motion to table or to, to consider at another time that vote, but the, we would be leaving this room without any way for the administration to be continuing expenses with no appropriation for FY 17, 18. I just want to hear from the administration what that would do, if we leave this room that way. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to that? Mr. Wahlberg, Mr. Timniak, or Mr. Mayor?
I'd ask my finance director and my chief administrative officer to come forward. Also, the town attorney wants to weigh in, certainly comment now.
The question once again.
I just want to, I'm asking, what happens if we leave this room without the town having an appropriation measure for FY 17, 18? There's no budget, no appropriation.
I can mention that the bills will be delayed during that period of time. We, we had set up with everyone, our printers and with quality data, to have the bills, once we knew the rate today, they would be printed and processed and delivered to our residents by Monday. So any, any delay would delay that two to three days.
So, point of clarification.
Wait, no, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Timniak?
I was going to say, we made special arrangements with the vendors who sent out the tax bills for, to turn around the bills in five days. Ordinarily, they ask for, was it 10, 10 days? They ask for 10. So last week, I spent everything organizing us in the event we, we ended up where we're at right now. You know, if we don't pass something today, and we pass something on Wednesday, yeah, I mean, we're looking at 10 days, 10 days to get the bills out from Wednesday, right?
I, I just want to say that my recollection from meetings last week was that if there was no appropriation, that the administration would have to consider what its workforce was with no appropriation.
Yeah, we.
Is that not the case anymore?
Yeah, no, that, that's absolutely.
Because that's what I clearly heard last week, which was the reason for this meeting at 8:30 in the morning.
Yes, no. We're just rehashing everything. The closer we get to August, mid-August, we run out of money. So there's no employment, there's no police, there's no fire, there's no public safety. So now, all of a sudden, we're going to have an agreement, or we're going to have a meeting on Wednesday, of which we're either, we're going to approve what, what's in front of you today, we're just going to do it, we'll do it on Wednesday now. The agreement we made with the tax vendor was, hey, listen, can you please, in emergency, do this in a five-day turnaround? We were told, yeah, we were told, yes. I don't know if that agreement's on the table for Wednesday. Is it?
I have to go with their staff. It can't be done, because it's vetoed, you can't. They go out, they vote for it, it goes out, and that's it. It can't be done legally.
I'm going to ask Deb Hime, the tax collector, to come up to the podium, and Deb, can you comment on some of the ramifications by the bills not being set up, particularly with mortgage companies or lien holders, people that have various mortgages or equity lines on properties? What are the ramifications to some of these companies?
Okay, right now, I, but my understanding is, we're going to be just up doing the real estate and personal property right now, because we're waiting for the state to do the motor vehicle rate. We have the real estate and the calculations on the elderly, which takes the assessor time to do the calculations. With our vendor, they're busy in the months of June, and they tell their staff no vacations or anything. Well, once that, they, it, that's off the table, because they have staffing issues now. When we, we are ready to, today, we are ready to go if we had the mill rate. Melinda had the rate that we thought, and we already started with that. The ad is set to go in the paper. There is statutory requirements that we have to put ads in the paper. It was ready to be posted on Wednesday, and if it doesn't get posted today, I've got to pull that ad, because that's $3,000 on the table right now. So whatever delays you do, I still have statutory requirements that I have to post and everything else. Now, saying that, the town running out of money, we were planning on going with a July 10 due date, last day to pay, August 10. I believe there's a lot of bonding due in the month of August, and that is why we are pushing for that, because we have a lot of escrow accounts with the bank. The banks tend to pay only a day or two prior to the end of the, so if we had it August 15, I think our bond is due around the 15th, so we'd be pushing it if we had a bonding due and everything. So that's why we were hoping for a July 10 date, last day to pay, hopefully getting the money in from the mortgage companies about the 8th. Because right now, we're depending on running the town on just the non-escrow accounts, the people who have money sitting around. A lot of your taxpayers don't pay until the last two weeks of the month. They don't, they wait until the last possible time to pay. So we're figuring, not many of the people are going to pay till around August. You'll have the ones that come in. And like Chris was saying earlier, people's, it's not set up to take payments, so they will not take our walk-in payments and do all that after August 1st. They told us absolutely, I got emails on that. So we've lost that option. There's so many, you know, it's a lot of things going on, you know, with staffing. We have to rely on our vendors, we have to worry about statutory requirements. We also have to make sure the state gets the reports on time. We did get extensions on for some of them, but there's a lot of things that are pending on. And then, you know, we have to, if there is a second billing, because the uncertainty with the state, you know, that's extra money there, too. So we just need some guidance where to go, because right now, we're on standby.
Can I just ask a question? And this is the first, this council would have heard this question also. If the mill rate, if the tax bills were sent out, I mean, the concern is that the mill rate is too high, because we haven't, wouldn't have realized any of the savings. Please bear with me, please bear with me. That, because we hadn't realized any of the savings that we had been working on. The last mayor's proposed budget, which was essentially the budget that four of us on this council had been working on, had a mill rate of 39.7, right? And that's substantial, that's quarter mill lower than what you're talking about. Is it possible, and this is also to the town attorneys, to pass this resolution with the tax bills being sent out at 39.7 rather than 39.97 in anticipation of a budget being passed that's closer to 39.7 rather than 39.97?
That would be.
No, okay.
It's an arbitrary number.
That's a quick answer. It's a nice thought, though.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So I just, so are we clear about what happens if we go out of this room with no continuing resolution? With no continuing appropriation?
Could you please repeat the mo, the original motion, I think?
No, there is no, I believe there is no motion on the table.
There is a motion, a motion to postpone till a date certain, which would be Wednesday, July 5.
Now, there's a second for that motion. I believe there's no discussion on that, so all in favor, say aye. Okay, roll call, Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
No.
Mr. Can? Mr. Young?
This is to continue it until Wednesday?
Yes.
This is to not send out, do an emergency appropriation now, and to have this meeting continue? Is it this meeting? I mean, we would be having, it's this meeting, but this hopefully is moot. Because right now, what is on this meeting is a continuing.
So point of clarification to the town attorney, would this be able to be put onto the agenda?
I'm sorry, we're in the middle of a vote.
Of the special meeting?
We're in the middle of a vote.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what it is.
Is that agenda is not going out?
To add this to the.
It would be added to the agenda.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Young?
Uh, no.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
And Chair votes no, so the motion fails. Okay. Is there a motion to, we are still reconsidering Ms. Manis's vote?
Madam, Madam Chairman, I would move the resolution regarding continued expenses for fiscal year 217 to 218.
Okay, all in favor of moving that? Is there a second to move the question? Is there a second for that, to move the question? Okay, seconded by Mr. Can. Okay, now I'm going to, Mr. Farrington Posner?
This is to move the question, not on the item, just.
Yes, I'm sorry. All, all in favor of moving the question?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, that motion passes eight to zero. Mr. Farrington Posner, how do you vote on the question?
No.
Mr. Harden?
I'll pass.
Okay.
No.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Chair votes yes, Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Okay, that motion fa, even though it's 4-4, it fails. So we will be leaving this meeting without a continuing appropriation.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Wait a second, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That, the meeting is adjourned.
I'm going to have to move this meeting downstairs.
Absolutely, absolutely, move this meeting.